Okay. So, good evening and Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you.
Oh, no Merry Christmas for me?
Merry Christmas.
Yeah. All righty. In accordance with the provisions of -- and I do not have my glasses on, so forgive me. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act NJ SA 1046 PL 1975 C231 S1 amended 2006 C70 S2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on January 4th, 2019, 2019 by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January 4th, 2019. Our mission statement, "Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society." Mr. Hastings, roll call, please.
Ms. Breach.
Here.
Mr. Grillo.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Lotaraca.
Here.
Ms. Lozinski.
Here.
Mr. Pickney.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Ms. Etienne.
Ms. Abas Anderson.
Here. Please stand for the flags.
Our pledge of allegiance to the mother of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lotaraca. This is for our report about committee chairs. Are you prepared to be our first? Report.
No. I always bring the minutes. Jeff always gives me a copy anyway. I didn't bring my minutes, and Jeff didn't bring me a copy.
So, how about if I do something else?
Uh, yeah, I'll pull them off.
Okay.
Uh, yeah. Oh, yeah, I can get them like, yeah, if you move on. Go to another one. I think I can pull them up.
Yes, sir. Um, Ms.?
I can't, I can't get anything on.
Okay. Right on my ear for you. Okay, what about you, Ms. Breach?
Eric.
And Eric? Okay, Eric, you're ready. So, would you please, uh, you're the Chair of Curriculum and Instruction. If you would report out, please.
Thank you.
Okay, um, uh, we discussed, um, some conferences, um, approvals, and also, um, Asbury Park High School and the Middle School to partner with the community YMCA to provide the Junior Achievers Program for up to 20, uh, ninth, ninth and tenth, and 28th grade students from, uh, January to May 2020. Um, also Asbury Park High School to collaborate with the Center for Supportive Schools to implement the Teen Prevention Education Program, Teen PEP at the high school. Um, we, um, spoke about seeking approval for the Asbury Parks High School and, uh, Middle School to partner with the Mental Health Association of Monmouth County to provide the PAST as to prevent, advocate, support, succeed, truancy reduction, and diversion program. Um, also for, um, Middle School to partner with the Y, Community YMCA to provide the Y Youth Boys Council Program for up to 15 boys in grades six to eight from January to May 2020. Um, and board approval, seeking board approval for the 2020, 2021 Asbury Park High School Course Guide. And also for the purchase of the ERS data system for environment ratings scales through the Brenell Group. And, um, also, uh, school trips. And that ends my report.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Pickney. Any questions for Mr. Pickney? Okay. Ms. Breach, are you ready?
Yes, I am, thank you.
You're the Chairperson of Athletics. Would you please report out?
Yes, we had a discussion, uh, on the rowing club. We act, we, we spoke about that a couple of years ago, and it was kind of tabled in, but we're looking at it again, considering we have a beautiful lake that's a stone's throw from the high school. Um, Mr. Javino, we've asked him to look into, uh, any other schools that might have some type of rowing program, um, also looking into a donation of some of the boats, because that's, that's the biggest cost of having a program, and also possible, uh, student involvement to see if we actually have students that might be interested in a rowing club. Um, we also spoke about the Title IX update. Uh, Mr. Moore is working on the update since we added another female sports, uh, program this year, so that should be updated, uh, next meeting. Uh, we also spoke about the, uh, coaches' appointments to have a better communication, uh, with the committee, uh, with the, uh, the director as far as just a little heads up of who's actually being appointed. Um, we, yes, let's go down. Up, up, up. Um, the sports signing advertising policy that we developed a couple of years ago, we want to try to, uh, get into that a little bit more. Uh, Mr. Javino was looking into the idea of a, a poster making, um, machine that makes documents that we could actually make money on instead of like outsourcing, that we could actually use it within our own district, and to use it for our own poster making and act, and maybe, you know, have it for another outside agency, you know, pay us to have something done. And, okay, just, just, I don't know how you say this. And we also did a review of the, uh, fall season sports program. The, uh, boys soccer team made it to the playoffs again. Uh, the girls volleyball team did a fantastic job this season, and they will be varsity team next year. Looking forward to that. And, uh, speaker system is another thing we're looking at too as far as the stadium, and hopefully, uh, next year we'll have a new speaker system put into the stadium so we don't have some of the, uh, feedback that we've had the last couple of years.
And that was it. Okay. Thank you. I'm going to go to Ms. Lozinski. Ms. Lozinski, you're the Chairperson of Policy. Would you report, please?
We have on the agenda today, uh, an update to the student represented on the board because of, um, a couple of items. Uh, we had only junior status, and we've changed that, crossed that out. It could be any, uh, grade level in the high school, freshman, sophomore, junior, or senior. And also, um, added that it either could be an elected student or appointed by the principal, and that's an update for you. That gives a little more flexibility. Um, let's see, we also, uh, talked again about advertising. We spoke about athletics, uh, especially banners and things like that, make sure we're in compliance with advertising on athletic fields or anywhere in the district. We're also going to try to get some sort of definitions on our facility's use policy in collaboration with Buildings and Grounds Administration to more specifically define class one, two, and three, so there's going to be no question as to which class organizations are, so somebody doesn't think they're treated unfairly, et cetera. And we're going to work on that. Uh, we had a district trademark update. We're still, uh, waiting for a couple photos, I guess, to finish the process for the attorneys. And we also went over, uh, there is a policy, believe it or not, I don't know how I found it, that it's for school district goals and objectives, and we spoke about making sure that every year, if we want to keep that policy updated so it's reflecting the current year's, uh, district goals and policies. We talked about apparel branding, uh, the apparel and the branding of the district logos, make sure there's, uh, more conformance as to, uh, different types of, uh, individual outerwear that's, uh, sold in the district, and make sure the policy is followed so there's no confusion as to where it came from. And that's it.
Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lozinski. And now, the Chairperson of, I have a blank, sorry.
Finance.
Thank you. Finance. Mr. Lotaraca, would you report, please?
Yeah, I apologize for screwing everything up there. Uh, the committee met, we, we began by, uh, discussing the 2021, uh, budget planning process and, and discussions about, uh, the aid reductions and, and how that's going to impact us and the kinds of things we're going to be looking at. Uh, we also had a discussion where as, uh, the proposed configuration comes out, there were some questions, and be aware that the, uh, grade seven through 12 model, um, just off the top of their heads, the district personnel were able to point out that, uh, Point Pleasant Beach and Henry Hudson use those models currently.
Kenelworth does.
Kenelworth does too, yeah. As I said, it was just a discuss, uh, freewheeling discussion and just two, and were immediately identified, and so we can find more if, if that's an aspect of, uh, of discussions going forward with the community. And really, the, the pre-K through three is another, uh, state, uh, state model, though that's the, I know that's the, the teacher license, uh, uh, division, uh, as they work, work that out. Uh, we want to continue to engage with the community, particularly on the, the impact of, uh, the S2 bill. Um, in doing so, we're, we're looking at how either the district or the board can be communicating and, and make sure we're following all, um, obviously regulations with, with that, in that regard. I think, uh, Mr. Grillo is going to be discussing the, there will be a, uh, town hall coming up that's part of the board goals that we set, that, that we have planned. We certainly also want to be emphasizing the district's academy programs and the dual college program, and I think we see from the statistics this month that enrollment at the high school is, is going up, and we feel like those are two major points in making in our individual discussions with community members and as we move forward in town halls and other ways about drawing students, um, to the district, both who are in Asbury and may be, uh, out of Asbury, and, and finally, the, uh, the issue of exploring opportunities and partnerships where we might raise revenue, how we can, well, we'll need to work more and more with the city. As an aside, I don't know if you saw that Neptune floated a, a trial balloon about, uh, hotel, uh, tax, uh, so, uh, those kinds of, uh, things moving forward. Uh, we, uh, other agenda items, we did, uh, sign the lease as the board approved, and, uh, we've moved all materials out of the 917 Third Avenue building relocated to the central office. That, that lease on that building terminates, and, and there's, uh, savings of, off the top of $35,000 per year. Uh, we're, uh, deadline's been extended for the audit, and, uh, with regard to our technology, we're still working with our consultant. We will be, uh, the consultant will be producing a report as we determine, uh, the, the cause of the, the malware, uh, issue that arose, and, uh, negotiations will be beginning as our current agreement with APEA expires in, uh, June of 2020.
Are there any questions for Mr. Lotaraca?
I just want to mention, I don't know if anybody saw, they passed the, um, the, the 2% tax increase for districts that are losing money. They, uh, they removed the cap, so I don't know if anybody saw that recently.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lotaraca. In the absence of Madam Vice President, who was the Chairperson of Buildings and Grounds, I will ask Mr. Hastings to give that report, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Buildings and Grounds Committee met, um, on Wednesday, the 11th. We reviewed sort of in conjunction with the Policy Committee, uh, facility use as relates to the definition of class one, two, and three users. Um, there's certain criteria that applies to those and certain benefits, uh, to those folks, uh, so we, uh, we're looking at that and trying to find, or fine tune the definition of those particular classifications. Uh, there were no facility use, uh, applications submitted. Uh, we did have one, but it was incomplete, so it was not presented. Um, the committee discussed the need to upgrade the elevator at the middle school. Um, the elevator's getting older, and it, uh, is to the state where parts are more difficult to get, uh, and/or they're, uh, fabricating parts, uh, in some instances. Uh, the estimated cost we had on refurbishing it is approximately $250,000. Uh, the district had a Q-SAC walkthrough, facility walkthrough. Uh, scheduled was the high school, middle school, and Bradley School. That was being done by the county superintendent and one of his, uh, folks out there. Uh, they got to the high school and middle school, and time did not allow them to, uh, come here to Bradley. Uh, they've rescheduled Bradley, um, uh, for January, I believe, and will conduct the walkthrough there. There are a few minor issues with some storage, high storage, and, um, some signage issues that needed to be addressed, but, uh, most of that has already been taken care of, so there will be no issues with that going forward. Uh, the committee discussed the current, uh, lease agreement with the city for the Donald Hamery Basketball Courts. That lease expires May of 2020, uh, so we'll look at that and work with the city to, uh, at the board's discretion, renew that lease. Uh, one of the concerns expressed was whether the city was adhering to the district's policies and, and regulations regarding use such as open flames and drones and, and other things of that nature. A notification to the board of, of when it's going to be used and by whom, uh, so those will be some issues that will be addressed. Um, on the other category, the conversation turned to donations, uh, given the season, and the committee was reminded of policy 7230, where donations should come to the board for acceptance. Um, and the committee also just touched on, uh, again, the need to restart the conversation on trying to have a foundation, uh, established. That was the, uh, main thrust of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings. Are there any questions? All right, thank you. Public participation in accordance with Board Policy 0167, seeing that there's no one out there, it's closed. And now... Um, Mr. Grillo has asked to be recognized, uh, so that he may discuss the town hall meeting, which is upcoming. Mr. Grillo?
Thank you, Madam President. So, um, we procured a, a venue for a town hall, um, that, uh, is part of our board goals, is to tell our story and communicate more on certain issues, um, and have more dialogue and transparency with, um, with, uh, the, the residents and the families of Asbury, so, Asbury Park, sorry. Um, and so, uh, Trinity Church on the corner of Grand and Asbury Avenue has graciously, um, allowed us to, to host a town hall. Um, it's going to be January 9th, and I don't know the day of that. I think January 9th is either a Wednesday or a Thursday. I, I, my eyesight is awful. Uh, it's a Thursday, and, um, it's going to be from 7:00 to 8:30. And one of the things that, that, uh, me and a couple of other board members, Vice President Etienne spoke about was to, in order to increase turnout, is to have these town halls have a specific theme or a specific issue that we're, that we're going to be tackling. And obviously, the big elephant in every room when talking about, about, um, the school board is S2. So, the town hall is going to be about, uh, S2, what it means for residents, what it means for our schools. Um, any board member that, that doesn't want to participate, doesn't need to participate, uh, I, I should have a flyer, um, on the other side of Christmas, um, to, to send out, but it's basically going to be your, you know, your average flyer that just says that, you know, what the town hall's going to be about, where and when, so. Um, and, uh, and that's about it. The only question that I had was if we had, uh, you know, essentially, what, what would amount to a quorum, uh, we would have to put that out to, uh, you know, we have to publicize it, right? So, um, I'll make sure to have that to Superintendent Gray and Board President, uh, Anderson between Christmas and New Year's, so we have enough time to publicize it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Grillo. Are there any questions?
So, can we confirm the time and date tomorrow so that we can advertise as the district re-closes for the next week or so? And I want to make sure it's out in time for sunshine.
Yeah, I mean, if you want, if it's, so it's, it's going to be January 9th. If, for some reason, a snowstorm or something happens, they told us that we can have the 16th as kind of like the snow day or the makeup day for it, makeup night, whatever you want to call it. So, yeah.
So, Trinity Church, 7:00 PM?
Uh, Trinity Church, 7:00 PM.
On the 9th?
January 9th.
Great, thank you.
It's in the gymnasium, right?
It's going to be, it's going to be in the gymnasium, right, right, right.
At the booth, is that?
Yeah, it's, it's not the main entrance of the church, it's the...
Soup kitchen.
Right, where, where we have Code Blue and the soup kitchen and all that other stuff. Right. So...
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Grillo. Review of regular meeting agenda items. Madam Superintendent.
Good evening and happy holidays, everyone.
Good evening.
Are there any questions regarding any items on B1? B3?
I've, I've got one. Just a technical point on, uh, number four, B3. The, the dates, the, these individuals, the, the district can reassign them, and, and we just approve farther down the road, but in many cases, they've already been reassigned, correct? Is that how the process works?
That is correct. We just want to memorialize it on our agenda.
Okay.
In some cases, they may have been a more recent transfer, but these are just to ensure that they've been properly memorialized.
Okay, but there's, there's no, there's no issue that the district can go ahead and reassign under the collective bargaining agreement? They do it, we just memorialize it here?
That is correct.
Okay.
We have that flexibility. Ooh, excuse me. And lastly, B7. Okay, seeing as though there are no questions, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Mr. Hastings?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, before I start on the business agenda, I'd just like to remind the board that the organization meeting is scheduled for the second, January 2nd, at 7:00 PM. There'll be no, um, district business per se conducted other than the organization, so we'll have the swearing in of the members and, uh, some housekeeping details regarding the adoption of board policies and, and procedures, Robert's rules, those sorts of things, and the nomination of the president and, uh, vice president for the coming year. So again, that's January 2nd at 7:00 PM here at Bradley. The, uh, agenda will be posted, uh, tomorrow on the Google Share Drive for everybody to see. If there's any questions, you can always contact, uh, myself, Ms. Brown, or Ms. Etcheverria. Um, on the business agenda, I'd be happy to take any questions. Uh, I would point out, uh, quite a number of donations, beginning on C1, number four, going to C3, letter H. So, a, a lot of great donations to the district and, and things that have been, uh, provided to our students. And I would also note that there was a, um, well, before I get to the addenda on item six, you have the preschool, uh, budget for next year. Uh, there's no change in the aid, uh, so, um, um, the early childhood department has gone through the steps and the procedures to develop their budget, um, based on the same funding that they've received over the past several years. Um, and then finally, I would point out on page C6, we have an addenda with, uh, two additional donations, and then a settlement agreement that came to our attention on Tuesday, uh, regarding a, uh, due process hearing. Be happy to take any questions from board members.
Mr. Lotaraca?
So, the state awards the, the early childhood budget discretionary? I, I mean, if our, if our enrollment goes up, the...
So, does the, uh, state contribution to the early childhood budget has been about $7.5 million for as long as I can remember. Um, the state over the past two years, you may recall, uh, maybe a year and a half, came out with additional funding with the new governor for early childhood. However, the district was already fully funded, uh, for our students, so there was no available increases to our aid. So, that number's been about $7.5 for quite some time and has not changed. You'll see a number of eight because there is carryover funding in that, uh, number as well, or money that wasn't spent in the prior year.
So, that's not formulaic based on student enrollment?
There is formula per, per student, uh, but the formula has given us flat aid over the past, uh, I want to say, I don't know, how many?
Since I've been...
Ten, ten years is a, a lot, quite, quite a while.
But, okay, I get, my question, i- if we were to focus as a future goal, say, on increasing pre-K enrollment, uh, under the current state system, would that result in increased revenue for us, or it's still discretionary on the part of the state, whether they're just going to say, "Well, we're flat-funding you again"?
Well, it's all discretionary.
Correct.
I was afraid you were going to say that, Carol.
It's formula-driven, just like our regular budget, uh, however...
They can do it.
The state awards with the state awards.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I mean, actually, I, that brings up a question. Is that, is that formula as secretive as the other formula, or is that publicly known?
They're not secretive. Why would you call them secretive?
What's that?
Why would you call them secretive?
The S2 one is.
Well, the S2 formula, it, you know, seems to be, we, we don't know all the details of what goes into the formula, that's, that's what I meant. So, that's why I was asking if, if that formula is, is the same thing or not.
So, the formula is, is complicated, I guess, if you could say, uh, but much like the K to 12 formula, it is based on a, uh, a model system and then adding in, uh, based on variables, uh, for demographics, for English language learners, for, uh, security issues, poverty, those sorts of things, so, uh, there are a lot of things that go into it. Um, I think the reference you're making, uh, may be to the lawsuit, uh, that several districts are participating in, and that applies more to the, uh, calculation of local fair share rather than tuition, uh, given to a district for its students.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Same, same, same question about the, the date issue on our student pupil placements.
Yes.
The district has the authority to place the student then, prior to?
I could defer to Mr. Bramley for some additional details, but in general, in terms of moving employees, it's part of the CBA, and there may be instances where we need to move them immediately, as well as with students. There's IP's put in place and assignments decided by the, uh, child study team, and those students need to be moved to those, uh, environments.
Decisions will be made by the child study team, who the board does approve it, but in many cases, to continue that child's educational program, the placement will be made after the team recommends.
Okay, so there's not a delay for...
So, there's not a delay, education.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right then, thank you. Need to adjourn, right? We're finished.
No, oh, so I have any other business I want to talk to you about?
Me personally?
No. No, I'll see you later. Okay. You have something, um, no? Okay. Need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay, we'll see you back at 7:00.
Hold favor.
Oh, hold favor, thank you. You know what to do, thank you.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Thank you.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, N J S A, ten four six, P L nineteen seventy-five, C two three one, S one amended two thousand six, S seventy, S two, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press, the New Coaster on January fourth, twenty nineteen, by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January fourth, twenty nineteen. Our mission statement is that Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. Mr. Hastings, roll call, please.
Miss Breach?
Here.
Mr. Grillo?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Lattaraca?
Here.
Ms. Lozinski?
Here.
Mr. Pinkney?
Here.
Mr. Saunders? Ms. Etienne? Ms. Abes Anderson?
Here.
Excuse me. On this evening, I have two presentations, and I would, I need the assistance of our superintendent, Madam Sansha K. Gray, and our business administrator, Mr. Jeff Hastings. So, you know, I, being the board president, being a board member, I had the opportunity to serve with amazing members. All of you, I feel, have access to amazing people. But there are two in particular that I'd like to recognize this evening. The Asbury Park Board of Education, having successfully completed the requirements of Level One of the Board Member Academy Program as established by the New Jersey School Boards Association, is hereby awarded the designation of Certified New Board Member. This goes to Mrs. Carol Jones. Now, I just wanted to say this about Mrs. Jones, will she come on? Because when she became a board member, she said, there are a lot of trains that I have to attend. She has been attending every one. And any new board member that came to seek her counsel, she said, listen, you have to go to the trains. You have to know what you're talking about, right?
Yep.
So, on behalf of the Board of Education, Ms. Superintendent? Thank you, one more, one more. Thank you. This Medal of Honor is presented to Carol Jones by the Asbury Park School District on behalf of being a certified board member. Thank you so much for your service.
My pleasure.
I'll call it in, Jeff.
Wait a minute, let me tongue it in.
Thank you. Now, when I first became a board member, back in twenty eleven, knew, didn't know what to expect or what to do, I had someone that I could turn to, and that was Mrs. Lozinski. And I could always call my Mrs. Lozinski. I would call you up on the phone sometimes and we'd have conversations, and I would ask for your advice. And you were always there advising me. And so I like to recognize you for your years of service, for your dedication. And so the certificate says, having successfully completed the requirements of Level Two of the Board of, Board Member Academy Program as established by the New Jersey School Boards Association, is hereby awarded the designation of Certified New Board Member. That's you. This is Mrs. Lozinski's twin sister, T.
We're giving away. You know, why don't you say hi? I saw you again.
I know who that is.
You do? Oh, just us? Just us? Oh.
Just want to take a little bit more time, Ms. Jones. These two, you two together, please. And then that's it.
You can go home now.
Merry Christmas, T. You're in the way, Jeff.
Part of his role. Come on, it's mine. I'm trying.
And now, uh, we have, uh, the superintendent has a presentation.
This year, with a recap, just to let you know where we are in terms of our district goals and strengthening the core. Core is our acronym for Curricular Programs, Organizational Leadership, Reimagining, and Equity. And so when we talk about next level Asbury Park School District and we talk about strengthening the core, we're not talking about our actual individual cores, but we are talking about if you understand the role of your core, it is the structure and the foundation for all movement and everything that allows your body to function properly. Likewise, metaphorically speaking, when we talk about our academic core, this is what helps to move and drive our programs. So I wanted to update the board on our progress that our staff is making. We haven't arrived there. It's a goal. This is a status update in terms of where we are and how we're making progress. It's a train. If you look at that carefully, one looks at that at one point and says, is the train leaving the station or is the train coming back into the station? Why is that particularly important? Because unless you're very clear about where you were and where you're going, things can get muddled. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to lend some context to the work that we've been engaged in. In the past, I've presented to you on, uh, around our student performance data and achievement, and rightfully so. We needed to be sharply focused and very intentionally focused on the remediation. We're continuing to focus on remediation of our students, but we also have seen small incremental gains that have allowed us to shift our focus to on-grade level instruction and beyond. In addition, we are also looking at protocols and processes in a very different way. So where we were, we had the lowest graduation rate in the state. We have perpetual low student achievement. Seventy-five percent of our students were reading below grade level. Half of that seventy-five percent were three to six grade levels below. Poor internal controls. The checks and balances were off. We're moving to a place and a space now where we're having more conversations about how we ensure our checks and balances are in order. Our board governance, kudos to you. Where we, when I came into this district, board governance was abysmal. And so the fact that we have celebrated tonight two certified board members and that we have not missed a meeting since I've been here in twenty fourteen speaks volumes to how this board has moved, moved forward. I do not want to downplay the importance of that because it is all intertwined with our student performance and student achievement. And so as we think about the small incremental gains, that's due in part to my recommendations to you and your approval of said recommendations. So thank you so much. And consistent leadership in the central office. Again, without your support, that would be challenging. I, I stand here doing the presentation, but I do not stand by myself. I have a wonderful team of individuals that are sitting around the days as well as in the audience and out in the district that allow where we're going to be an actual reality for us. And so if you look at our strategic design and our approach, it's built on rigor at the top, relationships on the left, and relevance to the far right. And the intersection of rigor relationships and relevance is next level Asbury Park School District. That's where we're going. Okay. Let me see, I have a little technical issue here. The COGS that you see here at the top are related to the work that we have in progress. So the top COG says RACE, R A C E, which is our Continuous Improvement Model. It talks about next level Asbury Park in terms of reviewing or reflecting, assessing, creating, and executing our plan. The other COG to the left is about stakeholders. Quad charts are the, is the quad, um, is the, um, COG to the right, and action plans are on the bottom. The four moving parts are what's allowing us to change our trajectory. Here's our Continuous Improvement Model, RACE. And if you look very closely, you'll see that the items are slanted because they represent our timeline and our timeframe for where we've started our project. So we had brainstorming opportunities in our stakeholders meeting in June of twenty nineteen. And I'm reading from the upper left corner over. We arranged them into categories at our following stakeholders meeting in July, and we reached consensus come September. The goals that were created are a result of that work, and this reflects our next level timeline. The four goals that were created are at, were focused around academic excellence, parental participation, innovative practices, and collaborative culture. The timeline on the bottom specifically speaks to exactly what we were engaged in with nearly one hundred staff and stakeholder members in our June meeting. In our July meeting, we had over seventy-five Asbury Park School District stakeholders from within the institution and outside the institution to inform the creation of these goals. And in September, nearly fifty staff and stakeholders continued to come and convene to talk about the development of our goals that were created and the action plans that accompanied them. And lastly, we had and continue to have a focus on a common language. We have a recipe in Asbury Park Schools. It starts with common language supported by common expectations. And so we've seen how, with our academic programs, that has been successful and yielded success. The unpacking now of common language and common expectations around goal setting, around objectives, and around a very clear timeline is where we are moving to ensure that our internal processes and protocols are being followed. What we have now at the high school in particular is focused around our career academies. I'm going to talk to you about academic data, college, and career readiness. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this slide because we have another presentation that I very thoughtfully wanted to make sure it tonight followed what I'm going to talk about. And the reason why, um, I wanted them to come together for you is because, as was mentioned, uh, as it relates to the data that I presented you with in your binder, we're noticing that our enrollment, specifically at the high school, is increasing. At a time when we have declining enrollment, we have a beacon at our high school where we are continuing to see an increase. The intentionality of the restructure was, um, purposeful in that the metrics that I've observed with the team continuously showed an uptick of interest at the high school. Then we started to look at and unpack the areas and possible reasons for it. The career academies are one of the most vital programs at our high school that seems to garner a lot of interest. Our career academies include law and public safety, allied health, and, um, Project Lead the Way, which is our engineering academy. Through those three academies, our students have the opportunity to receive industry-valued credentials. That means that when students graduate from the high school, if they are not on the trajectory for college, they can immediately enter into the workforce because they have with them a high school diploma and an industry-valued credential, and they are ready for the workforce. Our academic data. So our academic data, we're continuing to see the transference of what students are exposed to in their career academies happening and supporting the learning, the teaching and learning in the classroom. I've reviewed, the team and I, we sit down, we look at all sorts of metrics. And we've looked at, over the four years, the past four years, where students' final grades are. So we look, we took one data set in particular to focus on most recently, and that's the final grade for our students at the high school. And we're seeing a decrease as much as ten percent of our students from four years ago are not having Fs on their transcript. This is significantly important because then we're talking about credits, how many credits our students have and their ability to graduate on time. It's a check and a balance. If we're saying our graduation rate is going up, then we should see evidence to support that in the grade, in their final grades at each grade level. And so we continue to look at academic data in that way because we want to ensure that our students are prepared. College and career readiness. We have a college and career readiness coordinator as well as a department of guidance that continues to provide comprehensive supports because one thing that we understand is that when we're looking at an academically-prepared student, they need to have very real-world experiences to round out their resume to ensure their success upon completion at high school. I'm delighted that Ms. Janice Hughes has been one of our very consistent coordinators that's been overseeing college and career readiness, continuously working very closely in tandem, not only with our students at the high school, but has a very visible and large footprint in As, in the city of Asbury Park, through our Chamber of Commerce, other local businesses, and within our county and state. So the, uh, team, the guidance counseling team, works in tandem with Ms. Hughes, and you'll hear a little bit more about the specifics around that work. As it relates to, I mentioned our career academies and our program updates. One of the newest components for twenty nineteen to twenty school year is the P C T, which is our Patient Care Technician National Certification. I want you to know this because I want you to understand that, yes, it costs a lot for us to educate students in Asbury Park schools, but we are. but we are ensuring that we're fiscally responsible with the resources that we have and that those resources are tied to building a brighter future for our children. Our moral imperative remains that our eighteen-year-old, or in some cases, we have students that we keep until twenty-one, but our moral imperative is to ensure that they are college or career-ready upon leaving us because we do not want them sentenced to a lifetime of marginal employment or second-class citizenry. This is why we have these academies in place, and this is why we value and ensure that we have industry-value credentials available for our students. Debbie Sylvia and the rest of her team are ensuring that these programs are in place. EMT certification is critical, is very appealing and very interesting, and of high interest to our specific population. And so we're fortunate and blessed that we can continue to provide these opportunities for our children. And this, uh-oh, about to get signed out. Hold up, hold up. Make sure that doesn't happen. Engineering Project Lead the Way. So in our engineering academy, we have the JCPN L Engineering Mentorship Program. We have an engineering career day, and new for this year, we've hired an additional engineering teacher, and we're offering a course Introduction to Computer Science. We're very fortunate that at the Department of Education, our commissioner has set aside funds at the state level so that the, those funds can be appropriated to school districts to support computer science initiatives. And we're very fortunate that those, the state recognizes that, and we have this component that we're able to offer in our school district for our students. We are continuing to support them academically, but we don't have the luxury of waiting for them to get there. So what we are doing is we're flying the plane and gassing it at the same time. We're providing our students with very rigorous, high-level instruction as we bolster their literacy scores. And this slide shows Read 180, System 44, and Math 180. The conversations that we've had in the past were around ensuring that our programs were implemented to fidelity. What's fundamentally different here is that you see a little circle on the last bar, the green bar. That circle represents a bullseye because we're not just satisfied that our students are in these programs. What we want to do now is be laser-sharp in our focus and set targets. We're looking to specifically move numbers of students off of interventions into on-grade level access. In the case of System 44, that's a lot more remediation that has to occur for those students. Therefore, the movement should be out of System 44 into Read 180. And so we're not looking to just make small gains. We're looking to move a significant number of students, and we're having conversations about the bullseye and the target now because, see, this movement rises to the level of our expectations. If we're expecting to move a critical mass of individuals, then we have to start having conversations around that movement and make sure that we are articulating that throughout the organization. So this is the fundamental shift that I talk about when I mention Next Level Asbury Park School District. Where we are, we had a Leading for Excellence Symposium. That Leading for Excellence Symposium was around our stakeholders convening. Those were reflected on the timeline. We set those next-level goals, and we talk about having a collaborative culture in the district. It started with our deployment of our mission, our vision, our values, and our goals. The individuals inside this organization identified what we value. And I mentioned our moral imperative. That's our value. That's our North Star. That's what guides us. That's what keeps us centered and focused, ensuring that building a brighter future is a reality for our children. Our shared values include accountability, competence, creativity, discipline, flexibility, honesty, and reasoning. And then when we look at our problem-solving process, the acronym that we've deployed here is IDEAS. We identify the problem. We determine the root cause. We explore possible solutions. We assess those results, and then we standardize the improvement. The only way that we know that our success is truly success is if we can replicate it. And so this is where we are in terms of the creation of a process. This is not a fluke, that we have small incremental gains, but it's because of very intentional design. We are design thinkers. We are the architects of the future that we want our children to have, and we are systematizing that. And we do that through our team-building and having, and making sure that we are all collectively very clear about what we're saying we honor as an organization around our shared values. These are representative of quad charts. I don't expect you to read that, nor am I going to read that to you tonight. What I want you to understand, though, is in the system, in creating systems, it's not enough to say we have four goals. But we have to say we have four goals that have objectives attached to them. The quad charts are an expectation that I have that everyone in the executive committee oversees and has an ongoing conversation that filters down into the organization. Every member of the executive committee oversees a goal. We have two executive committees assigned to each goal. Initially, we had five goals, the fifth one being accountability. In our update, we all came to a consensus that accountability runs throughout every goal. Therefore, it should not be its own goal, but it should always be embedded in the goals that we have designated. Within our collaborative culture, which happens to be one of our goals, our objective here is to identify and prioritize district initiatives. We've selected content creators for digital space managers. We format guidelines, and we've created a digital space. I'm very pleased that Jeff Hastings and Dr. Howard Morris are the keepers of this specific goal. And when we think about this goal, excuse me, and as I explain that goal, that goal is not to repeat what's on our district website. That goal is for individuals within the organization to access it, to understand our initiatives, and to continue to provide resources within the organization so that we can move student performance and achievement forward. Jeff Hastings and Dr. Howard Morris, as I share, were on that goal. And one might say, well, that's kind of interesting that you have the business administrator on there. The purpose of assigning the goals is so that we don't work in silos anymore. We understand that the world that we live in today is not siloed, but we're interconnected. And so every member in the executive committee understands their role outside of their respective job description and job title. Another one of our goals is around family and community partnerships. Ms. Ivy Brown has been doing a phenomenal job shepherding this goal. And so we continue to identify the metrics that have been a part of our objective. We're seeing an increase in all of the areas. We've increased our community partnerships. As you've seen in our agenda tonight, the donations are over the top because of these kinds of stats. I have organizations that constantly email and call us. What can we do to help you? That is a direct result of faith and confidence in our organization's ability to deliver a quality product that supports our children's progress. We all know our current reality. This is the S2 law. This is not debatable. It's the law. We are always going to follow the law. But I always put this slide up. I always keep it in front of us because we are continuing with the loss currently of $5.5 million. We've already lost that, but we're projected to lose more. We are continuing to provide high-quality programs that our families and our communities are very supportive of and continue to make gains on behalf of our children. What we can never lose sight of is where we are in our current situation as it relates to the remediation piece. I said we're going to fly the plane and gas it at the same time. So we still have to understand that our children with three to six grade levels below, that takes us a long time to get out of that perpetual low student performance and achievement. However small it is, it is the first time that this district has consistently seen an increase of student achievement in decades. And so we need to celebrate that, but we also need to understand that this represents a word gap. That our students that are coming from environments where they may not have been read too early, this represents what we are remediating. And in some cases, our students have heard thirty million fewer words than their counterparts that are coming from a more affluent area. And so as we continue to move forward and talk about the four goals, it is critically important that we're always keeping academic achievement at the forefront, understanding that it's a large hole of remediation, but we are making steady incremental gains. I'm going to now turn it over to Debbie Sylvia, who will introduce her team, and they're going to unpack a little bit more for you as it relates to the guidance department. But what I'm finding particularly exciting about this team that's going to come forward is that we have very new guidance counselors, two of which just started a couple of months ago. And already, you will see their traction.
Thank you, Superintendent Gray. Thank you, Board, for allowing us an opportunity to present our counseling department and our college and career coordinator as well, Janice Hughes. Ms. Gray talked to you about the four district goals, and it's important for us to be able to show you what our department is doing to support each of those four goals. So before we start, I will introduce our counselors that are with us tonight. We have Joanne Major Phillips. She's at our middle school, but she will also be presenting on elementary today. Our elementary counselors, Cara Connor and Cara O'Connell, and John Venino could not be with us. We have Sakaya Austin at the high school. We have Amanda Brower and Stephanie Geiler. And you probably already know Janice Hughes. And it appears we're going through an update, so if it'll be long, we'll skip the video or... What? Sure.
Working on our updates. And again, our updates are designed to ensure our safety is intact. I would just like to just give a little background about this dynamic guidance team. Our most senior guidance counselor has been with, in that position for three years, Ms. Joanne Major Phillips. Please wave your hand. She's at the middle school. And it's important for you to understand this because when you see the work, you're going to say, wow. We're talking about a team of individuals who haven't been in these positions long but have accomplished a lot in a very short period of time on behalf of our children. And we have Ms. Sakaya Austin, whom I started with us last year, and she was holding the ship steady. And then we have our two newer guidance counselors, Stephanie Geiler, who was able to start in the beginning of the school year, and Amanda Brower, who started shortly after the beginning of the school year. And so I say all of that because we're talking about very young in the profession of guidance counseling of, in the Asbury Park School District, and very, very laser-sharp-focused in ensuring that our children's needs are being met. And of course, we know that Ms. Hughes, as the College and Career Readiness Institute, although she is not by title or job description a guidance counselor, she continues to provide that kind, that kind of support and that degree of support for our students. So when I say we have a dynamic team led by Debbie Sylvia, I am thoroughly pleased and I feel blessed to have individuals that are so committed to our children during the school day and on the weekends, as oftentimes you'll see Ms. Hughes running around, as well as the other counselors in the evening.
I'll also add, it's a, it's a very new energy, having some new counselors, some young counselors come join our team. And when Ms. Gray asked me to do a presentation to the Board to show how we were supporting the goals, and I shared that with the counselors, the first thing they said was, ooh, can we present? We want to present. So it's very nice to have counselors that are excited, that are performing with passion and purpose and following out those, carrying out the four goals and supporting the students as much as they can to, in those four areas. If we want to, we can talk through the presentation if you don't want to. Okay. So we'll, we don't have the slides, but again, having a new staff or newer counselors collaborating very thoughtfully, put their presentation through Animoto so that it could be easily uploaded to our website so that there would be a nice video. So we'll add that to the website. You'll be able to see the video at that time. But at this time, I'll introduce, introduce Janice Hughes because I believe you are starting the presentation. Oh, it was Joanne. Yes, Joanne, starting with the elementary school and then the middle school, and then we'll follow with the high school.
Okay. Good evening. I'm going to represent the elementary schools first, but I'm at the middle school. So the three elementary schools that we have are Third Good, Marshall, Bradley, and Barack Obama. Their main focus this year has been on social-emotional learning. Social-emotional learning, which is teaching students how to manage the emotions, set and achieve goals, and have empathy for each other. Cara Connolly, she's at the Bradley, and John Venino, he goes back and forth through Third Good and Barack Obama. The school counselors are also concentrating on classroom guidance, going into the classrooms and teaching lessons with the students, and they're concentrating on him and as with staff and as well as with students. Now, one component that is new for the elementary school is the Power Ten. Now, the Power Ten started off in the high school and middle school. The Power Ten is a program that where we identify students that need more attention. Students that have a difficulty in academics with attendance and as well as conduct. And what we do is we take them out for different trips, and we expose different careers, and just try to give them different support that they may need. Now, at the middle school, we have wraparound services. We have kids come in. That's a youth organization, and they do yoga and meditation with our students. We provide in-home and outpatient services, such as reform care if they need it, YMCA counseling, and children crisis center may come in and help if they, if need be. Assessment, we do suicide assessment. If we feel a kid needs to go out for further assessment, we'll send them out, or someone from Children Crisis will come in to the school. We have after-school tutoring, and we also link students and parents with our after-school activity program that will also have tutoring. We provide conflict resolution. We work with students on how to resolve conflict with peers as well as adults. And we have career counseling. We meet with students to determine their career paths they are interested in. And we also are helping the eighth graders transition into high school with the career academies. And we have, last year, we had a college fair. We had an HBCU college fair. I had Spelman and Howard come talk to our Dream Scholars. They did a presentation. They told them what it takes to get accepted to those kinds of schools, and the kids really enjoyed that. And we also identify at-risk students. We review students' academics, attendance, and conduct and see what type of support services they may need. Okay? Any questions?
Okay. I guess I'm next, and I think Mr. Hastings is going to try to come and do the tech work for us because we did put a lot of work into that, that video. But as we move forward to fulfilling the district goals on academic excellence, we really, really work hard to expose our children at the high school to different post-secondary options, college, careers, internships. We do all kinds of things to try to get them out in the community so they can figure out what they want to do prior to leaving our high school. So some of the academic excellent goals that we've done was... So some of the academic excellent goals that we've done was Raritan Valley HBCU College Fair. We took our seniors and our juniors to that college fair so they could, the seniors, of course, can apply, but the juniors can actually glean what to do. So when they do come back for the next year, they'll know what, you know, what to do. We usually try to take more seniors than juniors, but then we'll take some of the top-tier juniors that are interested in that. So our kids actually get accepted on the spot with that HBCU college fair, so we do have a lot of students that have gotten accepted out of the pool that we took. We also did the Hispanic College Fair at Whipbridge High School. That was an experience for our students because that was actually the first college fair that they went to this year, so that was a good experience. We did Bloomfield Instant Decision Day. Bloomfield actually came to us. We took our students to Bloomfield as well, and we have students who were accepted on the spot for Bloomfield Instant Decision Day. So what we try to do is if we can get schools to come in and give our kids, you know, an idea of where they stand, it kind of motivates them to keep moving and keep applying because one of our models is make sure you have options in your basket. So you want to be able to, you know, pick and choose what you want, not go with something because that's the only option you have. So that's what we try to do. Delaware State, we took our students to Delaware State University with, in partnership with The Spot. We traveled to Delaware. It was an amazing experience for our students because they really got a chance to walk on the HBCU campus, and that was a great experience for them. A lot of our kids are interested in going to that school as their first choice. Monmouth University, our kids have done a tour to Monmouth University. We also partner a lot with Monmouth University with some of our other programs. New Jersey City University, we also have a great partnership with Bloomfield and Jersey City University. Our kids can actually get into their EOF program, so we really push that program because EOF is a program that gives us, gives our students who are coming from economically-charged backgrounds, so the EOF is a great tool for them. So we try to make sure they get accepted or to that school. Senior workshops, personal branding, we actually invite different colleges who can offer our students opportunities with workshops. Our branding workshop was about how you show yourself on social media because that's what the kids are doing now. So that was a good opportunity for them to learn what to do and what not to do and how to present yourselves. Another workshop that's coming up is a LinkedIn workshop that's going to be given by the Assistant Dean of Trenton State College. She's coming in to actually do a workshop with us in 2020. We also have the College Promise Program. Our College Promise Program is offered by the Plangeir Foundation. Actually, we have 20, I'm going to read some fun facts because I can't get our thing, so I'm going to do the fun facts while I'm up here, guys. All right, let me give you some fun facts because those were interesting to me when we did the work. The first fun fact is 62% of our seniors that attended the Raritan Valley College was accepted to one or more HBCU schools. That means, and also 42, 42 acceptances were done for the whole day. So out of the students, out of the pool of students that we took, we walked home with 42 acceptances for colleges, so they have a choice. Those students have those kinds of choices. 20... 24 seniors have applied and been accepted to Brookdale Community College as one of their choices, that's in their option basket. 30% of our high school students are enrolled in one or more college-level courses. I thought that number was really high because we are high school, and to have 30% of our high school students that have taken at least one course, I think that's phenomenal. That's, that attributes to a lot of the work that's being done through this board. 18% of our junior class are eligible for College Promise. That's a big number. That, we started out with a small percentage, but that number has been increasing since we've incorporated all these new ideas, so thank you for that. And I'm going to turn it over to Sakaya because she has another announcement about acceptances too.
Good evening, everyone. Something else that falls under academic excellence, which I am very excited for about Asbury Park School District, is our Cutler Scholarship for Ohio University. If you don't know a little bit about Cutler, I'll explain it now. James Z. Daly was a graduate of Asbury Park High School in 1959, and then a graduate of Ohio University with a business degree in 1963. It is because of James Daly and his family that one of our seniors from the high school gets to partake in a tuition, room, and board-free four years of attendance at Ohio University. Our current student we have there now is Rosa Zuniga, who graduates in 2020. She was able to come to speak to our current seniors last year on the wonderful Free Study Abroad program that she was getting ready to attend for the summer, and the summer enrichment programs and internships that were available to her for free. Everything is paid for. We recently sent over four applications. We had two African-American students apply, one Hispanic student apply, and also one student of Haitian descent. Cutler will narrow this decision down to two finalists, who will be flown out to Ohio for interviews and also a campus tour. We will know who the finalists are when we return back from our Christmas break, so we will be updating everyone on that. Thank you.
All right. Hi, everyone. I'm Amanda Brower. Building on what Ms. Hughes said about the academic excellence tasks, we have also scheduled the ASVAB presentation and testing, which will be taking place in February of 2020. We're doing the presentation to inform the students that this is not just used for the services, but this could also be used as a career tool. We've had two previous FAFSA workshops. One was by HISA, and then the second workshop, Bloomfield sent out two financial aid reps to come and help our students apply. We had our Brookdale Apply Day this week. We also scheduled the Accuplacer, which, for those of you who don't know, this is a college placement exam. We had a PSAT and SAT presentation for our students to explain to them before they took the exams, the significance of this. Another thing we're very excited about is we renewed our pilot program for the solution prep that's starting back up in January. Eric Ginsberg will be working with our English and math teachers on how they can incorporate PSAT and SAT prep into their curriculum. This way, all of our students will be exposed to this opportunity. And lastly, the part of our academic initiatives is meeting with our students individually, which we will continue to do throughout the academic school year.
All right, I'm going to pass over to Ms. Gray.
Hi, good evening. I'm Stephanie Geiler again. So another way that we support our district goals is through collaborative culture. So with that, one thing that the counselors are doing is senior meetings. So with senior meetings, the counselors are holding senior meetings with each student in their caseload to review academic progress, graduation requirements, FAFSA, college applications, the Common App, and any post-secondary plans. Another thing that the counselors are doing is what we call the Senior Brag Sheets. So this is really a tool created to better know our seniors. Students complete these brag sheets in all of their senior English classes. This offers us really useful data, including colleges they're interested in, majors they're interested in, personal interests, sports, clubs, work experience, et cetera. So this has been a really helpful tool for not only the counselors, but also the teachers when it comes for us to write the letters of recommendation. Additionally, we have the Monmouth Vocational School presentation. So in addition to the high school's career academies that we talked about earlier, vocational offers additional specialties, including cosmetology, culinary, and auto mechanics, just to name a few. So those aren't offered in the high school, but what's nice is the VOTEC had come in and done a presentation for our high school sophomores about their programs, and this allows our students to explore even more additional career options because we're always all about options with our students. Additionally, what we have, something that's called Lunch and Learns. So Lunch and Learns are an opportunity for our students to speak to admission reps directly and learn more about all of their post-secondary options. So these are hosted during the student lunches, and what we have is we've set up opportunities with both armed services and colleges so students can get all the information they need. So so far with our Lunch and Learns, we've had the Navy, the Army, Montclair, and Berkeley come in, so that's something that our students have all had exposure to. Lastly, we've had JA Day, which is Junior Achievement. So with Junior Achievement, this is a collaborative partnership with our SBYSP program, which is also known as The Spot. This is where our high school students go into the elementary schools, and they actually teach lessons to the elementary school students, so that's something that we're also really proud of.
Okay, I'm back. Community and parent engagement. Now, that's another one of our goals that we are really working hard to make sure our students are out in the community, partnering with businesses, doing community service. So we actually have the BAM project and Beyond These Walls and the Eighth Grade Project. That's a project that's done through Big Brothers Big Sister. They are a really good company that comes in and they partner with us. Our BAM students, they go to Monmouth University, and they are mentored by Monmouth students. Our Eighth Grade Mentoring Program, our students that are mentored by our high school students. And then we have Beyond These Walls, which is an allied health component of mentoring, where all of our students that are engaged in that program, they go to Jersey Shore Medical Center twice a month, and they're paired up with a medical professional who is in the area that they're interested in. Some students, they have security, they have security at a hospital, so some of our students that's interested in security will mentor with that person, doctors, nurses, all kinds of professions that's in the hospital. So we do that twice a, twice a month. We have Back to School Night, of course, parent conferences. We've really been working hard to try to meet with all of our parents. If they don't call us, we call them. I mean, if they don't, they don't call us, we call them, and we actually invite them into the building, so we have during our parent conferences time. Community service, I know you guys have seen us out in the community. Hopefully, if you get to glean the video, you'll see a lot of our kids working out in the community with the mission, the mission state, the mission, I just got a brain freeze. The mission project here on Memorial Drive, we do that. We work with Sylvia, Sylvia with Chamber of Converse. We do a lot of different things in the community, so I know you guys have seen us, but that is so our students can get out there and know the community that they live in and work with the people around us. So those are some of the things that we do for community and parental engagement. Next is...
All right. Lastly, we have the Innovative Practices. So something new we started this year to keep track of our student data in lieu of the change in between Naviance and SCORE is we started a student data tracking Excel sheet. On this Excel sheet, we have every individual student, their status, whether their FAFSA's complete, whether they have letters of recommendation, they've started the Common App, their essays, post-secondary plans, if not college, the colleges they've applied to, and their acceptances. Next, we have the SCORE College and Career Planning Platform. This is going to be coming in January. Laura Shetlick actually just completed the data transfer of the student records. SCORE, we will be replacing Naviance. After taking the budget cuts into consideration, we've come to the consensus that we are spending too much money on Naviance and not utilizing the tools, whereas SCORE, we received for free due to an early registration, making this the smarter option for us. For those who aren't familiar, this is a user-friendly college and career planning platform. Lastly, we are working on becoming a RAM school. RAM schools are distinguished for having a comprehensive, data-driven school counseling program that upholds the American School Counselors Association standards. RAM schools are recognized at the ASCA Conference, the ASCA Magazine, and the ASCA website for having a model program. On behalf of the School Counseling Department, we would like to thank you for having us and allowing us to present on how the department is supporting the district goals.
So first of all, congratulations. You're doing a bang-up job. I mean, really, you're doing a really great job. I had a question. When, when the students go to the college fairs, right, like the HBCU fairs, what do we equip them with? What do they go there with to show them?
When students go to those college fairs, they have their transcripts. They have letters of recommendation, and somebody will actually start the application process so they can actually turn it in and get feedback from them right then and there.
Right.
SAT, oh, I'm sorry, SAT scores.
SATs.
Yeah, we actually, every student that went had a folder with all of their information, and they had certified, not certified, but official transcripts, which were sealed, so they can actually do the paperwork right then and there.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Hughes mentioned an EOF program, I think, in light of NJCU, and I just personally think the EOF program is one of the best things about higher ed in New Jersey. And so my question is, I want to make sure we're being proactive. Will our students know prior to applying about EOF program that, and I'm a little shaky on how the process goes, but I assume they have to get admitted to the school, and then there's some kind of reach back to the student? But are they aware, before they're even applying, that I think we should have that information to them?
Yes, sir. I am actually a product of EOF. I went to Stockton University, so I have a little, no, I'm sorry, experience through that. So when the students come to us and they talk about the EOF program, we tell them to apply to the school first, and then there's a separate application that the students have to do in order to get accepted to the EOF program. And then they have to also make sure that they have all the documentation, meaning their tax transcripts from the parent and themselves. If they did, if they did work, make sure the FAFSA is completed as well, so we go through all of that thoroughly with them.
I was just going to say, okay. So I was on the trip to Bloomfield College, and after our college tour, we actually sat in an EOF presentation. So the students were able to ask questions, they got all the information, and then we sat down with them in the presentation, and various students actually completed them and turned them in. And then the students who didn't get a chance to finish, we actually helped them complete that in the guidance office, so yeah.
I just have one question. I was thinking, you know, you always wonder what happens to the children after they graduate. Is there any thought about how you would keep tabs maybe on them and see how successful they are, or if they're no longer college? Is there something to fall back on that they have?
Actually, we are having a day where our, our high school graduates that are in college are coming back to share with our students. Ms. Bonbart and I just picked a date. Hopefully, it doesn't fall in with anything else, but it's January 10th. We are actually having the kids come back to share. So we do check in on them, they check in on us, and we actually still provide them services. If they, they find out that they're in a situation, we do come and help them. Oh, and we also do baskets. They, we give baskets. We collect and make sure they go back with a basket. Yeah. So we do definitely keep in touch with our students.
I just, and I hope that I, I say this the right way, because I mean it complimentary, to have you all here, your team. Each and every one of you is just dynamic. You know, if my kids, my kids now are, my oldest one is almost 25, and if I could rewind him and put him in the age where he would be a freshman or even an eighth grader, I know that he would be in great hands because of your leadership, Ms. Silva, and all that each and every one of you are doing. And I'm very proud to have you all here in this district because you love our kids, and you do, just as our superintendent has the, the purpose. You know what your purpose is, and then you connect that with your passion, and then the performance is just, our kids are in awesome hands, and I just, I want to thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Merry Christmas.
Yes, you too. We were trying to have a little thing in our school's kitchen area, you know, for the holidays, and already kept getting interrupted with kids coming back from college, you know, help me sign up for my classes for next semester, and, you know, we couldn't, we couldn't even eat our little treats because the kids kept coming down. So they are, they are coming back, and they do know, you know, once they're done with this, they'll come back.
Are we, are we checking into all of the kids who got... The kids that got scholarships last year, because a lot of them, I know, were renewal scholarships, but they...
Correct. Yeah. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
My report will be brief. I just want to also commend, again, that dynamic team, very intentionally designed to ensure that our students are successful, and that we're not looking at our students from a deficit mindset, but that we are preparing them for success in their futures. As I mentioned earlier, our enrollment is increasing at the high school. We see substantial gains there from last year to this year at this time of the year. Unfortunately, we continue to see a decline in our enrollment in the other grade levels, but we're just so delighted that we have that beacon of hope, and we're optimistic that through our reorganization, there will be a renewed interest, and hopefully, it will also attract others into our district. Our district enrollment has remained pretty consistent over the months. And then as it relates to our district attendance, we saw somewhat of a dip in October and November, so we're seeing now a slight increase in three out of five schools for December. That completes my report.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. I'm just going to continue to follow, and then I'm going to take a break before we go into public participation, because I wanted to talk about, briefly, about the activities that I've attended and also that we participated in today. But moving forward, the monthly HIB report, just move on, okay? We're not going to...
Dr. Howard asked me to do the report for her.
Would you please?
Yes, so there were six HIB investigations between two schools. Four were at Barack Obama, two were at Bradley Elementary. Out of those six, only two were found to be HIV. So remember, it has to be against a protected class in order for it to rise to the level of HIV versus it being a conflict.
Thank you. Now, before we move into public participation, I just wanted to say that I attended in the Obama School, their holiday choir course, concert, I'm sorry, concert. And I was tapping my toes, because those little young people came out singing and caroling, and, you know, they were just awesome. And, and I, and I hope that some of you were able to attend, because you were in for a real treat. And then also today, Ms. Jones, would you like to share your experience with the gift giving today?
I had more fun today, but I tell you, I'm totally exhausted from it. We had gifting today through the generosity of the Social Conscious Group. We put out Christmas presents for every child in every school. It was the most fun thing I've done in a long time, and it makes me wish I was young again. But every child, each classroom came in individually, and the gifts were all unwrapped, which was marvelous, because every child went and got what they wanted. Each one got one gift, and it was really cute. And the last one, when we were at the Obama School, this little girl said, "Oh, my sister would love this." So we let her take it home to her sister, but we gave her a second gift, but we did it very quietly. But I mean, for a little girl to really be concerned about her sister, it was just beautiful. But through the Social Conscious Group, we had enough gifts for every single child. And after they got their gifts, they went and had a picture with Santa Claus. And I have to tell you, it brought tears to your eyes, because they believe. It's so beautiful, you know? So it was an exciting, beautiful day, and I think we should send a letter to the Social Conscious Group and thank them, because there were so many gifts, and so it was wonderful. Just great. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. And now, public participation in accordance with Board Policy 0167. Anyone wish to come to the lectern and have anything to say? Then I'm going to close it. Thank you very much. And now, the State Monitor's report.
No report. I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Merry Christmas and Happy Holiday Season, and everybody be safe and enjoy your restful distancing from the district for a little while.
Thank you, State Monitor. And now, Mr. Hastings' acceptance of minutes.
I have a motion to accept the minutes listed A111A through C.
Second.
Question? Roll call.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yeah.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. LaRaca?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Saunders, I'm sorry. I'm staying. Thank you.
And now, Madam Superintendent, would you like to ask for consent agenda?
Yes, I'd like to request a consent agenda for items on B1 to B5.
Second. Question?
May, may I make, excuse me, items B1 to B7.
Second. Question?
All items B1 to B7. Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. LaRaca?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders Anderson?
Yes.
All items carry.
Now, before I ask for a motion to adjourn, please remember that our rework is January 2nd at 7:00 PM. No workshop, 7:00 PM, the 2nd. So at this time, I'd like to take this moment to wish you all a very happy, healthy Christmas, and a prosperous new year may favor be shone upon each and every one of you. All right? So thank you all very much. I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Merry Christmas!
Merry Christmas.
Happy Holidays.
Yes.